I think we're just waiting for one more board member. Let's give it another minute and we'll get started. Can someone text Liz to see if she's coming?
Yeah, I can do that.
Awesome. I'll go ahead and get started and hopefully she'll be here momentarily. All right, if we're ready. Hello, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. I call into session this special school board business meeting of the Stillwater area public schools on August 3rd of 2020. Due to the current federal and state emergency guidelines, the Minnesota directive to limit person-to-person contact during the coronavirus pandemic. This meeting is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota statutes 13D dot 021. Meetings by telephone or other electronic means. The board has determined that it is not feasible for at least one board member, the superintendent, or the district's legal counsel to be physically present at the regular meeting location. And that is not feasible for the public to attend this meeting at a regular location due to the health pandemic. People may monitor this meeting via live stream on YouTube through a link on the district website. School board members wishing to speak have been asked to raise their hand and wait to be recognized. All votes will be conducted by roll call. Each school board member should wait until their name is called before voting and indicate by saying yes or no clearly and using a thumbs up for a yes. This meeting is being recorded. Access to the recording will be made available on the school district's website as soon as possible. And with that, let's start with the roll call. Sherry?
Director Pelletier?
Here.
Director Patachik?
Here.
Director Riley?
Here.
Director Weisberg?
She's connecting right now.
Chair Stivland?
Here. There she is.
Okay, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. All right, the first thing we need to do is approve the agenda for this special meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Director Patachik, I saw your hand go up first. And I'll say that Tina Riley, would you like to second?
Second.
Okay. And then we need a roll call vote again.
Director Pelletier?
Yes.
Director Patachik?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Yes.
Director Weisberg?
Yes.
Chair Stivland?
Yes.
You have a unanimous vote.
Thank you very much. The first item on our agenda tonight is the review of the smart restart plan for this fall. And I think without further ado, I will turn it right over to Superintendent Landsfeld.
Thank you Chair Stivland and Board Directors. Thank you for providing us with this meeting. We have a busy year ahead of us and a lot of information coming out to our families and community and would like to make sure everybody stays informed. And with that, I would like to start our presentation if I can have that up on the screen. Thank you. A lot of work has gone into this presentation and we will continue to provide more information. I know district leadership teams, administrators, a lot of staff have put a lot of time into this and they're working evenings on the weekend and we do want to get this information out to everyone. If you will notice, this is our smart restart plan for our fall return. And you see, we're starting to put up pictures of people in masks. That is our new mandate from our governor in our state. I have been wearing my mask out and about more and more and it takes some time to get used to it. So if you do have children at home, if you would start practicing that with them, I think it would really be helpful at the beginning of the school year. This is our table of contents. So after this presentation and board meeting tonight, we'll be posting all of this information out online. We want to get this out to families, kind of like a working useful handbook. It has a lot of information. I'm sure families will be going back to this again and again. Our commitment, we have six areas that we're really committed to and prioritizing during this pandemic. The first is safety. That is our top priority for our students and our staff. It's a plan that reflects guidance from the Centers for Disease Control, the Minnesota Department of Health and the MDE, Minnesota Department of Education. Our second area is equity. We do, we need an equity lens. We need to be equity practitioners through this time. So our commitment to equity means that all students will have access to the resources and support they need to be successful regardless of the learning environment. Relationships, they're of the utmost important to us. We are committed to building strong and positive relationships with our students, whether they're in person with us or online. And we're working really hard to put together a lot of different opportunities to build those relationships. Student support, we are very committed to supporting the social emotional health of our students and providing increased mental health support through the pandemic. And that is for both our students, families and for our staff. Quality academics, whether we're in person or online or in a hybrid, we believe excellent teachers are essential to student success. And the quality instruction delivered in person or virtually should meet the same standard of teaching excellence expected in our Stillwater schools. And finally, we have family engagement. We're committed to working along with families to meet the individual needs of our students, whether it's inside or outside of our classrooms. We're listening. After this past spring, we surveyed our community to hear feedback regarding our distance learning. And the survey results helped us make improvements on how we will teach and how students will learn this upcoming fall. We also held a thought exchange survey this summer to hear your concerns, your ideas, your feedback and your input about the upcoming school year. And this fall, we will send out another survey to get your input to find out how our 2020-21 school year is going for our families and staff. And these results will help us make more adjustments and improvements. We know that we are going to have to continually improve and change and keep moving along based on our students, families and staff needs. We found out from these surveys and from thought exchange what matters most to you. Safety, flexibility and choice for families, more virtual learning experiences and personal connections, consistency, structure and expectations, improved communications. Most families just wanted one format instead of a lot of different options coming into them. And then they wanted us to look at the workload and student engagement for this fall. Okay, our governor in our state came out this past week with Minnesota Safe Learning Plan for the 2020-21 school year. And it's a five-step decision-making process that they provided us. First, we need to consider county-level data to determine MDE's recommended base learning model. We then need to consult with health officials to examine local data and consider impact on schools. We've been assigned to Washington County Health Department and we do have an epidemiologist that will be working closely with us. The third step, we need to evaluate our district's ability to implement required and recommended protocols. And this is very important because on top of all of the COVID rates, this will also come into play for making decisions on what model we're in. So we will need to look at staffing, transportation, supplies, protocols and physical distancing. Some of our buildings are set up differently than others and it can be difficult to physical distance. Our students, the high school, even it could have 1,400 students and it's still half the capacity. And how do we make sure that they can provide that physical distancing? Transportation, just as caveat, if we're in person, we do not have the buses to run at 50% capacity. So that would mean in person, the buses, we would have students two and three to a seat. So all of these factors come into play. Staffing, we're sending out a survey tomorrow to find out how many staff will be able, licensed staff, teachers will be able to return. Some might have health conditions, some might have family with health conditions. So we do need to have adequate staffing to supervise and instruct our students. And the fourth step, we need to determine the learning model to begin the school year. And then the last step, we need to continually monitor community and school level impact of COVID on a regular basis and adjust if needed. We're looking at the recommended base learning model that the state has provided us and it's the number of cases for 10,000 people over 14 days by county of residence. And I have here, we are trending towards the hybrid model in Washington County over the past few two-week polls, we started at 5.37 people per 10,000. Then we went up to 6.32, 8.92, 10.74, 12.71. And the last, look at the data, it was 14.84. So over all of those two-week data polls, it's on a trajectory going up. We have not seen it go down. Right now with the 14.87, we would be in the 10 to 19 range, which would be in-person learning for elementary students and a hybrid learning for secondary. That does not take into consideration all the operational decisions and support we need in place to make sure that that can happen. Okay, moving between our learning models. This is slide six and with this, I am going to turn over the next few slides to Dr. Jennifer Cherry, our brand-new first day-on-the-job assistant superintendent. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you Superintendent Man- Landsfeld. Chair Stivland, members of the board. I'm honored to be able to share pieces of our smart restart plan. The pieces that I'm going to be highlighting are specifically talking about the three models that we have been planning for. Just to reinforce the comment that was just made, as we anticipate moving between these learning models throughout the school year, the COVID-19 pandemic is changing the way we do school. And so our goal for the new school year, the 2021 school year is to safely restart learning and reconnect with our students. Saying that, it's very likely we'll have to change our learning format throughout the year. So sometimes we may be able to meet full-time in person or in a hybrid model. And sometimes we may need to move all students to a distance learning format. This will all depend on the prevalence of the COVID-19 cases in our community as well as our operational capacity to maintain a safe learning environment for all of our students. So whether we're learning in person or from home, all instruction this year is being developed in an online format so we are able to respond to these changing circumstances and move quickly between the models. Families and staff are going to need to be flexible and have alternative plans throughout the years we move throughout these three different models, district-wide or at an individual school or classroom model. And so what we're phrasing this on is a learning on the dial. As you can see, we will be shifting between in-person, hybrid and distance learning formats. In an in-person learning model, students would return full-time to school for in-person learning. In a hybrid learning environment, we would have a blended learning model where students would spend two days of the week at school, learning in person, and three days at home, learning online with an alternating schedule of an A, B, A, B, C. So students would be grouped into an A group or a B group. And then that last day, the C day, students all would be learning from home. In a distance learning model, all students would be learning remotely or would be learning from home and have the support of the district teachers through the use of technology. Now, we know that these formats and this constantly changing environment might be difficult for some families. Some families may also not feel comfortable returning to school. And so we have an alternative format in this scenario. Students may choose, families may choose to have their students enroll 100% in online learning. So families will have the opportunity to choose between our learning on the dial model or 100% online learning. Families will be able to choose this through an intent-to-return survey, which will be going out to families tomorrow. This is going to be sent by email to all families tomorrow. Families must respond by August 9th to indicate whether they will choose the in-person hybrid distance learning option or the 100% online learning options. Families who choose the 100% online learning option, we are asking them to commit for one full term so that we can plan our operational needs accordingly. Choosing your learning model. So are those families interested in 100% learning? These are the items that are going to be included on the survey. We are also going to ask families about their childcare needs, the device or technology needs. Specifically, does each child have a computer device to use at home? We also need to know about internet access. Do families have access to reliable, high-speed internet access at home? And also transportation needs. Will families use the district transportation if we are in an in-person or a hybrid learning mode? Or will they plan to provide their own transportation if we are in either that in-person or a hybrid model? So in in-person learning, all students would attend school full-time. Schools would have to follow all the safety protocols and guidelines for face coverings. And we would also have cleaning and sanitizing that would take place. In an in-person learning, there are some requirements that the state have put into place, such as the face coverings and the cleaning and the sanitizing. And also some measures are put in place here for physical distancing, such as no large events or assemblies that would be held. We would also make some modifications to the school day to limit the number of students in one area at a time, such as lunch or recess. We are being asked to stagger our dismissal times. And we would have some markers on the floor, physical spaces, to try to show individuals what six feet of distance looks like. That may not be possible in all situations in an in-person learning format, but we would try our best to maintain physical distancing to the best of our ability. We wouldn't be able to maintain that on buses, in all classrooms and else situations. But that's what in-person learning would look like. All students would be attending school. Hybrid learning is where we have our students at, split into groups. And so in Group A, students would attend on Monday and Wednesday. In Group B, they would learn at home on those days. And then Group B would attend school on Tuesday and Thursday. The fifth day, on C days, all students would be distance learning all day. So our buildings would be, we would have time to maintain the building cleaning. Teachers would have time to make those personal connections with students and also collaborate with their colleagues. In a hybrid learning environment, schools would follow all safety protocols and guidelines, continuing the need for face coverings. Here, we would have increased physical distancing and the same cleaning and sanitizing. Physical distancing in this format would also be more operational because our schools would be operating at about 50% capacity. This also would allow more space for students to distance while they're riding the bus because we would still only be at about 50% capacity at the maximum. The priority in setting up schedules in a hybrid learning format is to schedule families together on the same day. And so looking at who would be grouped into a Group A, who would be grouped into a Group B, we would look at family units and schedule them together on those same days. A note about hybrid learning, I can't say this enough, but we would be constantly monitoring our community COVID spread rates to determine as we would need to fluctuate between hybrid learning, in-person learning and distance learning. So it would require all families and all staff to remain flexible. Again, just a reminder, any family who does not feel comfortable with in-person learning can opt into the online learning 100% of the time. In a distance learning format, this is where we have 100% of our students learning at a distance or learning from home. We've learned a lot from last spring. We have received a lot of feedback. We are making significant changes from what we saw last spring in terms of delivery of education. We've recorded many lessons to introduce learning. Teacher interaction with students would be in one-on-one or in small groups. We would have a mix of scheduled learning times as a class along with independent online learning. Peer-to-peer activities would be provided for more social and emotional support. And we would have streamlined communication and more consistent use of our apps and our platforms. Within distance learning, there would be a combination of synchronous and asynchronous learning. To help you understand what I mean by that, synchronous is when students are learning at the same time and would connect virtually with their teachers and their peers. In an asynchronous learning environment, students would learn the same material, but it may be at different times and different locations. The difference between distance learning and online learning, the survey that we're asking families to take, is that with distance learning, we could be fluctuating between all three of these models. With an online, if families choose online learning, they would be committing to continual online learning for a period of time, a term. And we would reassess again regularly to meet those needs. And so again, for families who are not comfortable with any type of in-person learning or families who would like consistency and knowing exactly what their student's schedule would be, families can opt into 100% online learning. It provides a consistent schedule of at-home learning, provides teacher interaction with students one-on-one and in small groups with a mix of scheduled learning times as a class. So both synchronous and asynchronous learning types, both independent and class time. Peer-to-peer activities to provide more social and emotional support and also streamline communication and a more consistent use of apps and platforms. And again, we are asking families to respond to this survey no later than August 9th.
Thank you, Dr. Cherry. Appreciate that. Special education, we've been having a lot of questions about this and our special ed department has done an amazing job to put together plans for the upcoming school year for our students. In-person hybrid distance learning, students will follow their assigned regular schedule. Families and staff will meet to discuss and agree to a set of prioritized schedules and services to be delivered in person when possible. Other services will continue remotely as specified in the IEP or Individualized Education Plan or Individualized Family Service Plan, the IFSP. Services for students with complex health or support needs will be addressed in collaboration with families on an individual basis. We will collaborate with families, with parents. If you have any questions or concerns after our staff reaches out to you, please contact them again. We want to work with you and really support these students. If families that have students with an IEP or IFSP would like 100% online learning, that is available. Students will be provided their special education services and supports as outlined in their individualized distance learning plan. And again, it will be developed collaboratively with staff and family members on an individual basis. This option supports students and families with a variety of medical concerns or those who just don't feel comfortable returning to school quite yet. So again, we will look at students on an individual basis. Special ed, E.L. intervention. They are high-priority students and their schedules might look a little bit different than other students. We really want to make sure that they're being supported and their needs are being met. Hey, four-year-old preschool, a lot of questions about preschool. Preschool will follow the same schedules our elementary schools for both in-person and the hybrid learning. There will not be an online learning option for preschool families. Depending on space availability, preschool playdays, which are always fun, may be available for families seeking an option on the days when school's not in session. And the three-school preschool programming will remain the same during the in-person and hybrid learning as well. Preschool is a fee-based program. And special education case managers of preschool students will be communicating with individual families on their child's special education services during the hybrid model with online learning as an option for special education service delivery. So our preschool special education case managers will be in contact with those families to see what the needs are and they'll collaborate to set up those plans. Okay, supporting students and families, this is critical during the upcoming year. All learning models will focus on relationships and building those positive connections with staff and classmates. School counseling, mental health supports and resources will be available for all students, whether enrolled in person, hybrid distance or 100% online learning. Staff will be available to support families with technology needs. We're developing plans to provide orientation, web and link crew for sixth-grade students, their former fifth-grade students going into the middle school and our ninth-grade students that are just entering high school. We will have more information by our secondary administrators in an upcoming presentation about what that would look like. We also have our school psychologists, counselors, student advocates or social workers. They are going to be meeting and have been to put together plans for that extra support, social, emotional and mental health. They are going to be meeting and have been to put together plans, um, for that extra, uh, support, social, emotional and mental health that our students and families will need. Uh, we'll also be providing our ready, set, go conferences for all elementary students and families. And there will be a focus on building relationships during that time. And we're developing ways to build strong connections between teachers and students. Should we need to start the area in either hybrid or an online model? And there's information on how to access resources for mental health and wellness support. It's available on our website, but please do not hesitate to contact us via, um, phone or email. We, we do want to support our families during this time. School H Care Adventure Club, that's, uh, the care that we provide from six AM to six PM during non-student contact um, time before and after school. It's Executive Order twenty eighty-two indicates that the district must provide childcare for children of tier-one essential workers at no cost during the school day for kindergarten to age twelve. During times when the district is operating in a hybrid or distance learning model. Um, please note that tier-one essential workers, um, the job descriptions, they've been expanded to include agriculture and a few other areas. So, um, we will need probably, um, more space and staff for that. We will do our very, very best to provide a fee-based childcare program for families not classified as tier-one essential workers for before and after school based on available space in our schools and available staff. The space in our schools, we're working closely with building principals um, to find out what areas we can use and still provide that physical distancing. And then again, available staff, we need more staffing, um, because of that physical distancing requirement. Hey, safety protocols, again, this is a high priority to keep our students and staff safe. Frequent hand washing, face coverings. I've been wearing my, my mask as well. We, um, have some pony masks on order and coming our way. Physical distancing, just to note again, that it is no longer called social distancing. They have changed it to physical distancing. Um, disinfectant sprayers and fresh air hand sanitizer stations. Um, they've already been set up for our summer programs. We will follow all CDC and N D H protocols. Uh, physical distancing of individuals in classrooms, common areas and visual reminders for physical distancing will be posted. Face coverings for all students K through twelve and adults in our building will be provided. Um, a cloth covering by our district. We will also have disposable masks for, uh, face coverings for those that do forget to bring them. And the state has, um, committed to sending us a set for the, um, students and staff as well. Regular hand washing of students and staff, the stations are set up, um, throughout the school and from the cafeteria by classrooms, all the common areas. Uh, we're really, we've, we've postponed putting off school supply list just to make sure. We have to rethink this. We will not be sharing a lot of items, um, amongst each other and our students. Um, trying to limit that, increase daily and weekly, um, enhance cleaning and disinfecting and increase circulation of outside air buildings. I did ask for some more information on that. With this, with the safety protocols, HR, um, is working with the different departments to make sure that we will have adequate custodial and healthcare staff. That's very, very important. We did make, um, cuts a while back and, and we're going to have to reassess our needs. Uh, we're looking at staffing for the teachers, subs, um, paras, uh, building and principal secretaries and then the childcare programs as well. Um, the mask mandate exemptions, I've had some families call and say, well, my child has a health issue or my child, um, because of sensor issues will not be able to wear a mask all day. The mask mandate exemptions include people who have medical or other health conditions, disabilities, mental health, um, or developmental, um, needs, behavioral needs that make it difficult to tolerate wearing a face covering or any person that has trouble breathing, is unconscious, sleeping, incapacitated or is otherwise unable to remove the face covering without assistance. We're, we're going to work with families with this. We know this is a huge change. And again, Lakeview Hospital, um, we're going to try and partner with them, maybe make some fun videos to make a little bit lighter for our students, especially the little ones. HVAC or air conditioning, air circulation in the buildings, there's been a lot of questions about that. We are increasing the amount of minimum outside air from now until late fall. It's normally set around fifteen percent. We're changing it to thirty percent. The air handling systems are not designed to bring in larger amounts of outside air during the winter months. So we can run the units twenty-four seven as cold weather dictates, reducing the amount of outside air per design during this time. We're also extending the times of our building air handling units. The majority of our building's air handling units normally run from six AM to five PM. We're extending this to four AM until midnight, um, until late fall and weather dictates. And we're extending the runtimes, um, we're changing the air filters a minimum of four times per year instead of two times per year. And as always, we will continue to keep up with all of the preventative maintenance in order to minimize any potential breakdowns. We know that air circulation is very important during this time. And, um, I, I appreciate, um, Tony and his team providing me that information because we have had questions about that. Hey, screening expectations, family, students and staff are expected to self-screen at home before coming to school. Children and staff should be screened daily for any symptoms of COVID nineteen, including new onset of cough, shortness of breath, fever of a hundred degrees or higher, chills, muscle pain, sore throat, loss of sense or smell or taste, gastrointestinal symptoms such as, um, diarrhea, vomiting or nausea. So anyone experiencing any of these symptoms should not attend school. If you're, have any questions about it, please call our, our health office in the morning before school and we will have somebody in our health office that can help walk you through this. Transportation, the bus capacity will be at fifty percent as defined by M D E and Minnesota Department of Health. Students, um, drivers and bus aides are required to wear the face coverings or masks. Students will be one to a seat and those from the same household may sit together. Seats will be assigned. Um, we, we are going to be assigning seats because if there, um, is a, a COVID case and they rode the bus to school, we need to know, um, the students and adults who are in, uh, close proximity within the six feet of the students. And, um, bus pickup areas at each school, we mark for physical distancing. And the individualized education plans or I E Ps, um, driven accommodations will be reviewed with a commitment finding solutions for all families of children with special needs. Cleaning and disinfecting will take place following each route with special attention to high-touch areas. Bus and parent drop-off and pickup zones and loading and loading times may need to be, um, modified. Uh, a lot of schools with the summer, large summer programming, they've had to stagger the drop-off and pickup times just to maintain, um, the physical distancing and other guidelines. And specific instructions will be coming from, uh, each child's school. School meals, uh, it's been a wonderful program this summer and this past spring when we went into distance learning with the school meal pickups, um, the places that were provided, the, um, nutrition, um, staff, they have done an amazing job, um, of tirelessly putting together meals to provide for many, many families. So in-person hybrid schedules, breakfast and lunch will still be available to students when they're in school. Meals will be also available to students, um, for days they are learning from home. Distance and online learning, if students are on one of those, um, options, weekly meal distribution will be available for families choosing one hundred percent online learning as well as for all families when in a distance learning mode. Meals that are served at school, students may eat meals in small group settings outside of the cafeteria, including classroom spaces as determined by the school sites. At the elementary school, we're still looking at options for preschool, kindergarten, first grade, the, the primary grades to possibly have enough room in the cafeteria to really spread out and do that social distancing to possibly be able to eat in there. We're still working on those plans. Students will wash hands before and after meal service. Okay, this is a big question, have I been exposed? We get a lot of calls on this and, and, um, because of that, just, uh, this last week, we are going to, um, be posting a clerical position, uh, for somebody with a health background just to take these calls and to make sure that all of the protocols are being followed and everybody's being contacted that needs to be contacted when something like this happens. So if a student or staff member has a confirmed case of COVID nineteen or COVID symptoms, they must stay at home for at least ten days, uh, since symptoms began and until low fever for at least three days without medication and improvement of other symptoms. Siblings and household members, they need to stay home for fourteen days. Other staff and students exposed to the individual will also stay home and quarantine for fourteen days. Um, this is another reminder that families need to be ready to be in all three modes unless they opt for the online option. Um, if the classroom happens to be exposed and all of the kids, um, for some reason or other were in close proximity, the class would have to go home, um, for that quarantine time or on the bus. If they were around each other, um, for some reason and there wasn't physical distancing, then that section where they were exposed, they would need to be home for fourteen days. So families, if you think you need that possible childcare on and off during the school year, please start thinking about that now. Um, and we would like to try and support that. So if you're near a COVID-positive individual and closer than six feet or longer than fifteen minutes, that equals a possible exposure and, and we would have to have, um, those people quarantined according to the days they need to be. Hey, what happens when there's a COVID case in school? And again, this is another reason why Lakeview Hospital and some other partners will be wonderful to help support this. We will communicate to all families in a school when there is a positive case, staff or student, and it's happened both ways, um, during this school year. We'll conduct extra cleaning in areas where the infected person has spent time. We'll continue to provide important health, um, information to families. We will contact all students and/or staff who are in close contact with a person who has a confirmed case of COVID nineteen. We'll monitor symptoms of students and staff and send students and staff home if they become ill at school. Um, all of our summer programming, uh, sites, including Afton Lakeland, um, where I've been, they have an isolation room. So if somebody is identified with COVID symptoms, we can keep them there specifically, the students, until we can have a family member, um, parents pick them up. We will not provide personally identifiable information of an infected person. We cannot give out names of people that are positive. And we will not immediately close schools for one positive case. We will look at these on an individual case by case, look at the scenario, look at the, um, people and students or contact in contact with them for exposure and individually look at that. Um, uh, again, families need to be prepared for all three. Um, this summer, for instance, we did have, um, grounds crew. We had some custodians and it took out, uh, three to six people. And if that's at a site, then that really inhibits how we can, um, function and provide support for our students. So there's many, many different scenarios that, that can occur. Hey, athletics and activities, I've had a lot of questions on this. And thank you to our athletic, uh, director Ricky Michael for always, um, providing great information on what's going on with this. Uh, we will follow all Minnesota Department of Health, N D H, um, guidelines as well as Minnesota State High School League, M S H S L, and the National Federation of State High School Associations, uh, standards for return to play protocol. A decision, a decision on the status of fall sports is expected to be announced, um, in mid-August. I just spoke with, um, Ricky, we have had, um, in several different athletic, uh, programs, some students positive with COVID and then we've had to shut down the programs and the students that were exposed, um, needed to be quarantined. Uh, I, I have been very happy with all of the coaches and facilitators of these programs. They have provided all of the plans, um, that will follow these guidelines to our athletic department and community education department before they can even start. Um, then our district is checking to make sure that they follow the guidelines. Um, the, the biggest thing is the social distancing, um, and when they can and cannot wear masks, um, when they're outside and inside when they're exerting. So there's a lot of thought that goes into this. Um, this is the last week of contact, um, that students will have with the coaches for the summer programming. And I just heard that on August seventeenth, the high school league will be meeting to make a decision about, um, the upcoming athletic events and see where they're going based on, um, the, the COVID rates. Okay, community education classes, um, first off, I have to give them kudos. They've been coming up with a lot of different possibilities for the upcoming school year of providing some support with some distance options. Uh, community ed classes will be held online and in-person, provided the number of participants can be physically distanced and no other state or local restrictions are in place at that time. It's also depending on the space availability, offerings may be limited. And face coverings or masks are required indoors except when physical distancing is possible and at times when the activity requires the participant to exert themselves. As much as possible, participants will have individual supplies and participants and instructors must follow all self-screening expectations. And I know with, um, some of the community ed classes as well as athletics, um, students love to be social and we always have to remind them about the physical distancing guidelines. Um, it's just tempting to get together and, and, um, have some fun. So that, that has been, uh, a little bit difficult, but we're getting better at it. It's kids like to be together. The PAC or Pony Activity Center, the number of members allowed, um, to work out at any given time will be restricted based on local data from public health. Members must follow all self-screening expectations. The face coverings may be removed at the PAC while the level of exertion makes it difficult to wear a face covering, provided that social distancing can be maintained. And members are expected to follow all equipment and cleaning protocols. I know, uh, my little gym that I go to, people have been very respectful to wear the masks except when they're, um, uh, exerting themselves and then lots and lots of clean supplies will be there for people to, um, follow those protocols. Hey, how can families prepare at home? Um, you could do a lot to help us and to help your children. The guidelines we will implement to address the challenges of COVID nineteen upcoming school year may seem uncomfortable to students at first. I know trying to wear my face covering, it just didn't feel natural at first and, and, um, you just have to put that time upfront to make it, um, a better experience for when students do start school. So try these tips, talk to your child about returning to school in September. Talk, start talking to them now about how it will look different. Um, what the physical distancing will look like, how to wear those face masks. Model at home wearing your face covering, washing your hands, um, and demonstrating that six feet of distance. Allow your child to pick out a, a fun face covering that's comfortable to them. Uh, please do know that we, I will remind you that the, um, state will be sending us out a cloth mask for students. We will be providing a cloth mask and we will have extra disposable for students that do forget. Practice putting it on, taking it off. Um, they can practice, the little ones can practice with a doll or a favorite stuffed animal and encourage your child to ask questions. Um, they can ask questions, uh, with their parents or with the adults at school. We're here to help them and support them and they can share their feelings, their worries, their concerns and we're here to support. Hey, this is, this is very, very important that we have families complete a survey that's coming out tomorrow to all families. We need them to complete the intent to return survey, which will be sent by email tomorrow, August fourth. Families must respond by August ninth to indicate whether they will choose in-person hybrid distance learning or the one hundred percent online learning. We need that data to start making decisions about our school year. Uh, families, um, please watch out for Adventure Club childcare registration coming your way mid-August. We've had some questions about that. And please watch for more details to come from your child's school regarding hybrid, um, schedules. I know the elementary and secondary principals are putting together more detailed plans and we'll be presenting, um, those detailed plans in an upcoming board meeting. Staff, very, very important that you complete the staff return to work survey, which will also be sent out tomorrow, Tuesday, August fourth. Staff must respond by, um, August ninth so we can plan appropriate staffing for the coming year. Um, I know one district, um, had staff, we're close to twenty percent, we're not returning. Um, with this, if they need to be in-person, we need to know that so we can plan to support our students and, um, all staff. If, if you need accommodations, we need to know that so we can see what we can do to provide those and support you. Um, we will also request, um, that the school board make a decision as to which model we will utilize. We've gone back and forth with this. We want families to know, um, how we're going to begin the school year at our August sixth meeting, knowing that if that decision is made to go one way or the other. we still might have to change before the beginning of the school year depending on the COVID trajectory because it, you know, the rates, they're going up. Maybe again, the mask requirement or face covering requirement might help the COVID rates from going up, but we don't know at this time. Families need to plan for all three models. We are trending right now to be in a hybrid model for the elementary and secondary, but we'll provide more information to you. I want you to ask questions of us so we can try to make the best decision possible for our students' families and our staff. One more thing before I finish the families. This will be in Skyward. You are automatically enrolled in that hybrid distance in-person option, but we need to hear from you if you want that online learning so we know what we need to provide and how we need to staff or support. And with that, I will turn, I'm sure you have a question or two after this. I'll turn the time over to the board to ask questions.
Thank you so much for that incredible report. That was lots of details, lots of good information. And I just want to say thank you to everyone who has put in so many long hours to plan to make sure that this fall restart goes off without a hitch, goes really well and that we're planning for so many different things. So thank you for everyone for how much work is going into this. Let's go ahead, board members. We'll start with Director Potatik.
Superintendent Landsfeld, you and Dr. Cherry both referenced the fact parents have to make a choice or students make a choice and especially the online learning for one term. What is one term? Is that a semester? Is that in nine weeks?
Well, we're still working on that. Right now, we're thinking that it would be a quarter at the elementary level and a semester with maybe a few adjustments on days based on the high school set schedule for the middle school and the high school. We want to give families some flexibility. Some districts are requiring a year commitment. We want to make sure families can make some choice.
So a quick follow-up then, you're talking about the minimum would be nine weeks, the maximum would be a semester.
At the time, yes, and we're still meeting morning, noon and night to get this figured out, but that is where we are right now, but more details will be coming.
Director Weisberg?
I have a bunch of questions, but the one that sticks out the most right now is if we're asking teachers and parents to have a decision by August 9th, why are we as a board going to make a decision three days before that date?
Because operationally speaking, it's going to take time for staffing. I'll give you some examples. For transportation or busing, if we're in a hybrid model, we are going to run A and B through neighborhoods. We're going to run a route. On A day, we're going to run a route the same way on B day. Because if we don't do that and we're going from hybrid to in-person, it's going to take a lot of time to be nimble. I use the word nimble and flexible to get it back on track to run it both in-person and hybrid. We need to be able to do both. We are still trying to figure out staffing. We don't want to overstaff or understaff, but we have different staffing needs. If it's in a hybrid versus if it's a full in-person and we might need a lot more staff. If it's in-person, we are administrators, we're leaning towards looking at the COVID rates rising and all the operational items that we need to address with hiring all of the staff and possibly a lot of teachers. We want to be able, if we were in the hybrid mode, we would probably be able to better start and know that we could support the kids before we could ease into an in-person model. We know the in-person is best for our kids. That's where we want to be, but we also know we want everybody safe and supported and we need to make sure that we can do that operationally.
Okay, just one follow-up to that. The A/B model, has it been decided that the C day would definitely be Friday? I thought there was also an option for the C day to be on a Wednesday in between for cleaning during that time.
Yes, we looked at both options and from what we can see, if the teachers that have been getting together, if you do A-A, C-B-B, the students are going a very long time longer in between seeing their teachers and we feel like the relationships are very important and those connections are very important. So our staff preferred A-B, A-B with the C so they could continually have that connection, a better connection with the students. And yes, Kathy, can you?
Just going to add to that, Melinda, there are a couple of days where we do have a C day that is not on a Friday. So for example, Election Day is November 3rd. We right now have that scheduled for a C day. And then we are looking at, there may be some other places where we, due to the way the schedule falls, may have a C day that doesn't fall on a Friday. So I just wanted to make sure that the message doesn't get to parents that it's always on Friday because it may on a couple of occasions not be Friday.
And also a lot of families like that option if they have time to have the online learning and be mobile to where they could go out of town or they could go to grandmother, grandfather's house or, you know, and still have the option with a three-day weekend or break there to where they could still be mobile and have some time. So we're trying to support the staff. We're trying to support the students with those relationships and connections and then giving families some options with the three days together.
Thank you, Director Riley.
A little bit of a follow-up to my question. I know it's difficult to, or understandably more challenging to go from online learning or their distance learning onto the hybrid model. What about those families that may start out on the in-person learning or the hybrid model and it just isn't working? Can they move to online before the term is up?
I don't know that I have an exact answer for that. I would hope that we could be flexible, but John, if you're on, do you know more about that?
Hey, good evening. So it's a little bit complicated. As we get a better idea of which families are opting into an online model, it'll really help us put some of the definition around what that online model will look like. The online model, say for third grade, would look different if there were five kids participating than if there were 50 kids participating. And so as we develop that for the different grade levels, it'll become really important because as curricular decisions are made, you may have a divergence between what the curriculum is and the 100% online and what the curriculum is and not really the curriculum as much as the curriculum pacing is in that in-class or hybrid environment. And so that can make moving between the two models very tricky if you are, you know, it could create a situation where you're missing a certain part of the core curriculum. And so the advice is going to be to discourage people from making those moves, but would be left really for that conversation with the counselor to figure out what is best for the student, the family, and how can we arrange this with the timing of the courses so that it works for everybody if it's really necessary.
Okay, so for instance, like if, you know, there was like a back-to-work thing and it was a work-related issue, then the parents needed to go back, the district would really look at that case individually?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, most districts, what they're asking is that parents connect with the individual building principal if they do have those needs and then the principal can work with the district leadership teams to see how we can address those individual needs.
Wonderful. Director Pelletier?
Thank you. Melinda, I'm still a little bit perplexed about the timing. I'm looking at page eight. Families intend to return survey is August 4th through 9th. But we are set to vote on August 6th? I'm confused by that. How, what am I missing with that? It seems counterintuitive to me, so I'm assuming I must be missing something with that.
Well, we are leaning towards the hybrid model and we would like families to start planning for that because of the operational needs that we have to really support and get off to a great start. That's what we would like to bring to you. We think it's going that way. We are getting many, many phone calls, emails. Families want to know just to give them an idea of where they're going. I hate to keep changing it. We don't, I believe we don't have another school board meeting after that date until the 20th and that's getting pretty close to where school's starting. You know, we can work with you, but we felt this, families want to know.
Can I just do a quick follow-up on that? I think, my thinking on that too is, is that if the deadline for giving the notice for families, whether, if they're going to do the 100% online, it might be helpful for them to know if it's going to be a full-time in-person option or if it's going to be hybrid. I think that might make a difference for some people's decision-making. So if we make a decision that's definitive on the 6th, then they'll have a few more days till they have to notify which one they're going to do. Right? Director Potatik?
Yeah, a question I have, and John, perhaps this is one directed at you. If I'm filling out that survey as a parent and I look around what facilities or what technology are available in my home, am I influenced by the technology that I have? Or if I don't have it, will the district provide it?
So our plan is to provide technology to anybody that needs it, regardless of the model that they sign up for. And we know that many of our families have the technology they need already based on our experience this spring. But part of the survey that we're sending out is not only asking what model people want to opt into, whether they want to, you know, be on the dial or 100% online, but also we're putting out that survey again to find out and ensure they have proper internet access at home and find out what kind of technology they have for their students to do their learning on. So the language in there is fairly specific. We really try and couch, we will provide technology to anybody that needs it and doesn't have it. But if people do have the technology they need, we're encouraging them to use what they have in the house. One of the caveats we really want to clear up for folks though is that we don't expect students to share a device. So a family that has three kids at home should have three devices so they can do schooling at the same time. And if they don't have enough devices for that, they should respond in accordance with that on the survey and we'll make sure they get the tech they need.
Awesome. Thank you, John. Kathy, did you have something you wanted to follow up to?
Yeah, I just, I was, I thought I might be able to help a little bit with Jen's question about the, why the notice and the timing of it. When you, with both the staff and with the students and the family side of things, really with the families, what they're deciding is, are you opting into the, excuse me, the model that is going to shift from day to day? It could be hybrid today and distance tomorrow. And so really what they're deciding is, am I going with the model that is fluctuating or am I choosing online? And they don't need to know exactly what model that is to make that decision because we could make a decision that it's hybrid, but by the time we get to school, the rates have rocketed so high, we have no choice but to go to distance. So they have to be able to go from one model to the next and it really, your decision is, do I want the fluctuation and I adjust with it or do I want consistency in online? And that's really the same for our staff. Our staff have to be prepared that today they could come back to hybrid, but tomorrow they're going to end up doing distance or they're going to end up doing in-person. So what it is today doesn't have a huge impact on their decision. It's a huge decision to make and so there are different circumstances, like they may need to leave because they have a health condition or they may need to request that if we can accommodate it, we do distance learning and assign them to that distance learning type of class because they can't, they have a risk factor that would put their family at risk. Or we believe we have some staff that are just saying, I'm not coming back. I don't want to be in front of kids. And so we have the challenge of trying to figure out, how do we have enough staff? But if there are people that do not want to continue, how do we, is there a way for us to do that? So those are all the pieces we have to figure out how to staff before the start of the year.
So I got you. So thank you. So basically choosing the hybrid model is more, you're making the conscious choice to kind of adapt as we have to adapt. So that's, that makes sense.
Correct.
And then just right, because you're right there with one of my other questions. Can you say a little bit more Kathy or Melinda about the way, like the teachers in the classroom? So I had been asked this from a community member. If, is it the same teacher that teaches the online model versus two to three-day or distance learning? Is it, you know, are we still kind of adapting that? We're still kind of working on that as time's going on here? Is that still in process, I guess?
I defer to John on that to explain that just a little bit.
Yeah, so you know, that again, it could really depend on what the participation is in 100% online learning. If we're in a situation where especially you take maybe a 10th grade student who's taking chemistry, if you've got two or three of your chemistry students choosing that full online option, they may be receiving instruction through that classroom teacher who may be putting those items online. But there's also depending on how many students opt in and what that curriculum looks like. There could be a subsequent decision to use, you know, a fully implemented online curriculum through another curriculum provider and then that might result in assigning a different teacher to that. So we really won't have specific answers to that until we have a better idea of what our online participation looks like.
Director Riley, did you?
Yeah, I do. Could you explain what the role of Adventure Club is in distance learning? I know we received an email today with a little bit of question around that and I think it would be good to identify exactly what their role is to parents that may be listening.
I'm wondering if Annette Solomon can come on here and maybe give us a little bit of information.
I can. Hi. So last spring, as you know, when we were in distance learning, how we arranged the support while students were at emergency childcare was that we set aside a certain time each day where staff would specifically try to support the needs of children. So I certainly can foresee that that would be an option for us this next school year. Keeping in mind that the individuals that work for Adventure Club are generally speaking, individuals who do not have formal training for providing academic support. So it's, you know, the space is always there for students to work on their work, but the individuals that are working in Adventure Club may not have the expertise necessary to help them with everything. So I hope that helps.
So it's not really their role per se to, I mean, if they're able to, they can, but that's not their responsibility in totality?
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Thanks. Director Potatik?
Yeah, it's, John, this is another one for you and it's kind of related to technology and the devices in the home. I realize that devices are one issue, but I had at least one parent contact me and they're concerned about if they've got three learners or more in the house and they're all trying to use the same internet. Is there any advice for them or any alternatives?
Yeah, so generally speaking, the online curriculum that we offer isn't extremely bandwidth-intensive. Even when it requires the viewing of videos on platforms like YouTube, that doesn't carry the same bandwidth weight that watching 1080p or 4K action would have. And so some of the bandwidth limitations that normally exist on a broadband connection won't impact instruction. I think some of the families that struggle the most in that regard live in areas that have very limited internet access. And in those cases, you have families that are either using satellite or they're using a cellphone base, so like a hotspot or a tethered cellphone. And that can, that can provide challenges to getting, to getting really good internet access that can support this kind of learning. Families that are really struggling and have run out of options should contact us primarily through their assigned classroom teachers. Part of the attendance process in the district is to ensure that students are able to engage in their instruction. I also encourage them to respond to the survey and let us know that they're having that issue by indicating that they don't have or can't get reliable, high-bandwidth internet in their home. One of the big challenges with that is that our solution for families that in no way can afford internet access has been to use cellular hotspots. And so a lot of times what we're providing is what they already have and that doesn't necessarily make an appreciable difference. and that doesn't necessarily make an appreciable difference in their experience.
Director Pelletier?
Could you say, and I, I don't know who this would be, if this, Melinda, if this is back to you or who, but, you know, a couple of things. Dual immersion, for example, what does that look like? Is that emerging? How are we addressing that? Is, is that on the, I'm sure it's on the radar, but how, I guess, how is that emerging? And maybe along those lines, you were talking about, August 17th is when the, the big, kind of the sports decision comes about. Where are you at with regards to theater and music? Is that kind of, is that adapting, changing? Has that been discussed yet? Or, you know, when can people expect a little more information on that?
Okay, the dual immersion, we would have to defer to Principal Gordy on that. I can find out about that and provide more information during Thursday's meeting, if that's okay. He's not on with us tonight. And then the theater, music, it's still evolving. We're still working with other districts. We, we need to figure that out. Music, the singing, that can be highly contagious, we're hearing about. So, it might be online, we might have to put some distance. We're still working out the details on that. Our goal again is to get back to normal and how it was, but at this time, we're still trying to work it out to keep people safe.
Director Weisberg?
Thank you. I know that some colleges are talking about, even if they're doing in-person class, when we get to the Thanksgiving holiday, going to all distance until January, just because they don't want people going home for Thanksgiving, getting, being around different people, coming back, and then same thing for Christmas. Is that anything that we're looking into?
I think we'll always look into things like that. We, we need to get the school year started. We need to see how it's going. We need to see what the rates are and make some decisions at that time. Right now, we haven't made any decisions about that. There might be a couple of school districts that are, are looking into that now. The tenants are going to try and meet weekly to go through what everybody's doing and why, to support each other through that. So I'll, I'll try and find out more information on which we're thinking about doing that.
Okay. And then for our meeting on the 6th, could we have access to whatever information has come in? If people, you know, have gotten their survey results in earlier, students and teachers, can we have at least what's come in so far for the meeting?
I will see if we can get that. I don't know if Carissa is on here, and I don't know how, if we can pull those, or John, how it would be to pull what's been turned in so far? Do we have access to that?
In terms of the survey data?
If we have, what data's been turned in so far by next Thursday? I know it won't be complete, they have until the 9th. But wondering if we'd have an idea of where people are going at that time.
Yeah, we can definitely look at initial survey results. My anticipation is that they will be skewed, because the, the folks that are going to log in right away and fill out the survey are going to be making sure that they get a seat in that online option.
And just one more quick one. I know that we're dependent on families to take temperatures and see if any, any symptoms are apparent in their children before they come to school, but will teachers be provided non-contact thermometers just to be able to reassure themselves?
That hasn't been part of our plans, but we will have extra healthcare staff that will be providing at schools that are trained and do that. I, I know, I, I've gone into a store from a hot car, and it took probably six different temperature checks before my temperature was down to normal. And so I, you know, sometimes it takes trained staff to do that, but they will be available, which would be a simple call on the phone to the office, and somebody will be down to do that.
Thank you.
Director Riley?
Could you tell me what the procedure is? If there is an infected student or a staff member, how does, how does that get communicated through this other staff in the building, whether it's, you know, custodians or anybody else that may not be immediately there at the time? How does that, is it done through principal? Or how, how does it, how is that handled?
Well, I'm going to defer to Paula, but as I mentioned earlier in our presentation tonight, we are putting together a job description for a clerical staff that has a health background, just to start a call center to take these calls, because we're finding out, things have been going to Paula, and she is going to be so busy, if this is any indication, you know, just from our summer programming. So we would start with a central call. And then Paula, if you're on here, I would defer to you to answer that.
Hello, I'm Paula McDonald. House Services Supervisor for Stillwater Schools. So, we have had cases of positive students or teachers during spring and summer Adventure Club. And so the, the procedure that we follow is that once we hear of a positive, then we notify everybody that was in direct contact. So right now, it's myself and Adventure Club staff. But during the school year, it would be in collaboration between the principal and the health staff, and the registered nurse, and the licensed school nurse who supports that building. So anybody that was deemed to have direct contact, that being within six feet for 15 minutes or greater, those people are asked to leave. So if it's midday where somebody starts feeling ill, we might, or get some kind of, say they didn't come on Monday, but on Tuesday we find out that they were positive, a student, then we would, those, that whole classroom would be sent home, and they would be quarantined for 14 days. So the classroom would all get personal phone calls, anybody that was in the school, or any other, say a health para or a regular para, or anybody else that was in contact with that student. We would have to look back to see who they were in contact with for the 48 hours before we, they had symptoms or were known to be positive. We would then also, we notify the Minnesota Department of Health of any positive COVID cases. We would make a general statement just to the building to say, there has been a case in a classroom at X building, so people are aware. But we will wait for a positive case and then notify the people that have been in close contact.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Director Pelletier?
Thank you. Not really sure who this set of questions goes to, but first of all, thanks for the info, Melinda, like the HVAC. So I quickly was typing, so you're changing the air from 50% to 30%, if that's accurate? I, I hope I got that right, increasing the air.
It's changing to 30%, yes.
Okay. I'm kind of repeating this, because I, I know a lot of, of families are really concerned about air quality. So, increasing air handling units, 4:00 AM to 12:00 midnight, changing air filters from two to four times per year, which is, you know, positive. I guess staffing-wise, oh, two things. One, the isolation rooms, Melinda, could you say a little bit more about that? I don't know, I, I wrote that down. I don't know if that is something new, if you have that in every single building, or maybe say a little bit more about that. And I do know that staffing is probably going to be a pretty acute issue here soon. So however we can support that, you know, certainly want to do that.
Yes, I, we do know that the air circulation is very important for our students and families and staff. So, Tony Woger and our operations crew, they are aware of that, and that's why they're putting these changes in place. They'll watch it very carefully. I know the engineers at each of our sites will be also supporting that. The next question you had?
Isolation rooms.
Oh, yes. I can tell you what, we've had them at the schools with the summer programming. At Afton, Lakeland Elementary, we had a smaller, kind of like a, a storage room with shelves and a phone, and a little desk in there across from our health office. We completely cleared that out. We added the health supplies that would be needed in there. We have a cot in there, and it's in close proximity to the health room. So if somebody did have those symptoms, then they would be in that room. So every school or every site will have to have an isolation room when they open. Okay, and then the staffing, right now, we will be coming to you. This is why we're looking at the hybrid model rather than the in-person model, because we need to know also how many people we need to staff, and it's going to be overwhelming in person to probably provide by the beginning of the year, the staffing that we might need for that. And that's another reason why we would like to ask for a decision this week, so we can start the staffing as quick as we can. If we put it off until the 20th, we're, we're going to be behind, but it's healthcare. We'll probably need some staff for that. We will need more custodians, depending on how this teaching survey comes in. We will probably be needing some teachers. And then we'll be looking at other staff paras, we might need to be staffing them. Special Ed, we will be utilizing the paras during this year a lot more than we did this past spring with the students in their IEP. So, yeah, that, that's, staffing's critical, and that's another big reason that I forgot to mention earlier, why we're moving this up to try and make a decision. Before I forget as well, MSBA, I believe, is, is sending us out a template for a resolution that could be brought towards the, to the board for consideration to give some type of authority for myself and the district to make some of these decisions on when to close a school because of outbreaks, when to close multiple schools, when to distance learning. Otherwise, if it's, we'll have to look at the resolution to see what it states. Otherwise, we might be having a lot of special meetings to make decisions on the fly if this COVID goes the way it's going right now.
Director Potashik? You're on mute.
Question I have is when we were hearing the report on what you do if a student is, has COVID, and basically how you proceed from there. Have there been any occurrences of that sort of thing this summer?
Yes, and I. To Paula, to give an idea of what we've gone through this summer. I know we've had grounds crew that's had to quarantine. We've had custodians that have had to quarantine. We've had students that have had to.
Yeah, that's correct. And Annette can feel free to jump into, but we have had, exactly, we've had a case in grounds crew that took out all the summer grounds crew for 14 days. We had a custodian that was sick who actually then ultimately tested negative. We have had two teachers out at one school this past week that, that one tested positive and one ended up testing negative. So, we end up closing two schools, two classrooms at one school this past week. Do you have anything to add, Annette?
I would just add that there have been a few situations that we've navigated with our sports as well. We have sport camps happening right now. You caught the general idea.
Director Riley?
And that, this one's for you again. I guess I have a little bit of a follow-up on the Adventure Club. So if the students are doing synchronous learning or something where they need to be in a, how, how does that work with, with the scheduling? How does Adventure Club then, with the tier one, you know, people that are in there, how do you, how do you handle the, the need?
Right. So if the student has, I'm assuming the student would have technology with them, and that we would provide the space and the, for that individual to work on whatever it is, whenever they need to work on it. The staff would be there, obviously, and there would be other students in the environment, but that, you know, will have the flexibility to say, okay, this, these children are working on their academics right now, and these children are doing other things if we, if we have that need. Does that answer your question?
I think so. I was just wondering if there's going to be an, an increased need for staff, or if that's going to have to be changed up a little bit with the, the hybrid model?
Right. So we do have to, we will continue to have lower ratios than we've had in other circumstances, but, and then we will be divided still. Now granted, there's been some new information about with some of our larger spaces, you can put two groups in a larger space, for instance, like a cafeteria. And so, you know, there, you, you might see a few differences from last year, but that the staffing ratios will be a little lower than, than we typically have. You know, like a 12 to one ratio versus a 15 to one ratio, something to that effect.
Okay, thanks.
Director Weisberg?
Thank you. I was, I think this one may, might be to Paula McDonald. I just wanted to clarify, I think what I heard was if there, and, and obviously there have been cases in some of the schools that had Adventure Club. If there is a case, not only will we communicate to the people that have been in direct contact, but also a notification would go out so that everybody, parents would know if it happened in the building at all?
That's correct. So, so everyone that were, everyone that was in the classroom or in direct contact with the student gets a phone call, and everybody that was working in the building gets just a general messaging that they're, just to let you know there was a case in the building.
Okay, and then that, and then MDH is, is also contacted?
Yep, and the MDH is notified for every positive case.
Okay, thank you.
Director Pelletier?
Thank you. I don't, this is a transportation question. Or the, the, if there's a positive case in, in a first-grade classroom, how, I, I'm hoping, assuming, but I don't know who can speak to that, but, but how does that, is that going to get communicated to students on the bus who might ride the bus with that, with that student?
Yes, Paula, do you want to answer that?
Right, so if we determine that somebody is sick in a classroom, then we're going to contact trace who all they've been in contact with. So if they ride the bus, then we're going to contact the bus company, and that's why they're doing assigned seating on the bus. So we're going to have to determine who is within the six-foot radius with them on the bus and determine if they were close contacts, meaning on the bus for 15 minutes or greater and sitting within six feet. And then the Minnesota Department of Health often helps us with contact tracing as well.
Very good. I suspect that we could be here for another hour with more questions. This has been incredibly interesting, and there's so much for us to learn. I think it's important for us to remember, you know, that obviously our, our priority number one right now is the safety and health of our students and our families and our community and our staff. But I think what we're trying to balance that with was, is providing the support that our families need so that our students can continue to learn and grow as they should be. And obviously, that's really complicated right now. Much more complicated than we could ever possibly have imagined. So, I appreciate all of the hard work that's going into this, and we will continue to be talking about it. We'll have additional information on Thursday at our board meeting. Any final thoughts or questions, board members? Director Potashik?
Yes, and, and the big one. How do we communicate all the information that we heard tonight to the people who aren't watching?
It's going out. That's why there's a table of contents, that was slide two. So it, it's kind of like a little booklet, and we will be sending that out, I believe, tomorrow morning, and as well as our survey. And it will.
Yeah, go ahead, Krista.
I can probably jump in on that one. Communication's sort of my thing, but yes, you're right. We are sending an email and a phone call to all families tomorrow to let them know what we have shared, where they can find it online. I'm actually, as we were meeting today, I'm updating the website right now. So within the next 10 or 15 minutes, all of this information will be out on the website for people to review as well. We'll be sharing it on social media, and there will be reminder calls or emails throughout the week too, just to remind people if they hadn't gone in and filled out that survey yet, that they, they go in and do that. So a lot of different communications coming out. We kind of joked that people might be sick of hearing from us this week, but our intent is really to make sure that everyone knows what we have planned and that they have answers to their questions and, and where to go for more information.
Thank you so much. Director Weisberg?
Thank you. And Krista, this is. Thank you. And Carissa, this is actually for you too. So one of the questions that I had, the, the, I don't remember what slide it is, but the one that talks about the 14.87 that we have now, that's been trending up, the number of cases per 10,000 over 14 days. Is there a way to put that link on the website just so that parents can easily access it to know what our numbers are doing?
Yeah, I will check on that. My understanding is that information will be posted on the Minnesota Department of Education website, and that's where we will be accessing it. So I'll see if I can find a link that I could provide on our website for people to go there and, and find it directly.
Thank you.
That's a great idea. All right, well, if we have had enough time to have a lot of our questions answered, I think maybe it would be a good time for us to move on to our next item on the agenda. Thank you, Melinda, so much for all of that great information and for all your hard work. The next item on the agenda is to authorize legal counsel to resolve an election notification issue. And I'd like to just take a minute here to kind of explain a little bit of background on what, what, what the issue actually is. As you all know, the resolution declaring two open seats on the school board was passed at our last regular board meeting on July 23rd, 2020. The public notification for the filing dates for the filing of affidavits of candidacy for the special election for those two seats was scheduled to appear in the Gazette on July 24th, which would have been the very next day. And as you may remember, during our board meeting on the 23rd, we found a clerical error in the actual resolution that was in the language that was intended to be put in the notification in the paper. And so we took steps to amend the notification so that the clerical error was fixed. However, for reasons that are not quite clear, what actually happened was that that public notification, instead of being repaired and put in correctly, it was canceled. And so then it did not appear in the Gazette on the 24th. It has appeared correctly in the Gazette now, and and, and it will appear through, through next week as well, through, through August 7th. The notification for the filing dates for the affidavits of candidacy for the special election has been posted on our website for a few weeks now. It has been posted on the door of our central services offices, and it was also posted in the Pioneer Press. However, the law requires that we, as a district, use the official newspaper of note, which happens to be the Gazette at this time. And that's something that we decide as a board, as a board every year in our organizational meeting. This situation was complicated by the tight timeframe of the posting of the special election and the fact that the Gazette is a weekly newspaper. So the timelines were very difficult to achieve. And in talking with the authorities and legal counsel, I mean, I think you could argue that we did everything we needed to do to provide a sufficient notice of the special election filing period for the affidavits of candidacy. Because it was, it did appear in so many other places, but the law requires that it be, be in the newspaper for two weeks, in the newspaper of note, but before the filing period begins. And what is gonna happen now is the two weeks will appear in the paper, but they will happen during the filing period instead of beforehand. And so what we would like to do is have our legal counsel file a petition with a Washington County judge to issue an order finding that this inadvertent and unintentional error has been effectively corrected and that the special election can proceed as normal. So that's just a little bit of background on what happened and what we need to do. I need a motion tonight to approve asking our legal counsel to authorize, to authorize the legal counsel to resolve the election notification issue. Let me just say that again. I haven't been done over here. I need a motion to authorize legal counsel to resolve the election notification issue. If I could get a motion. Director Weisberg?
No, moved.
Thank you. Can I get a second? Director Riley is the second. Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Board members, do you have any questions about this situation at all? Director Pelletier?
Oh, I'm perplexed by this. So we are, so this motion is to authorize legal counsel to resolve the election notification issue. So does that mean we are authorizing our legal counsel to create a petition?
Yes.
So, so we are-
To file, to file a petition with the, with a Washington County judge.
Are there any timeline ramifications? Is there any precedent for this?
There is, there is, this is, would be the normal, this would be the normal course of action that we would need to take as soon as we find out that some, an error like this has taken place. This is the way we remedate the situation, by asking the Washington County judge to make a, to make a declaration of what, of what the situation is. And so, yes, that's, that's what it is. We'd be asking her to file a petition with a judge.
Follow up on that, Sarah. So are there any negative perceived consequences of this, of this situation, or is this, there's no, you, you, you don't perceive that there's gonna be any issue with this?
At this time, what, what we think will happen is the judge will say, you did everything you could. It's fine, just proceed as normal. I, I don't know what other options there might be. One thing that could happen is they might extend the filing period to a little bit later date to allow more people to file, if that happens to be the case, but I, I don't really know, but I, I don't think the chances of that happening are pretty high, are, are pretty low. Director Weisberg?
That was actually one of the questions that, that I had. If they do have to extend the filing date, how many days are we talking about adding? How many? I guess, how many days has it been done correctly now as far as the Gazette? And then if we did have to extend it, how, what date would that be?
So that would be something the judge would have to decide. So I have no idea. I, I have no idea what that would be. They would have to make a decision and tell us what you need to do. The law says we have to have the notification two weeks in a row in the, in the, you know, for, for 14 days before the filing period. We will have that, but it just won't be before, it'll be during the filing period. So it's just gonna be up to them to decide if that's, if that's sufficient. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, are we ready to vote? Okay. Sherry?
Director Pelletier?
Yes.
Director Potatik?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Yes.
Director Weisberg?
Yes.
Chair Stivland?
Yes.
You have a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Sherry. All right. And I think seeing that we are at the end of our agenda, if there's no concerns, we're ready for adjournment. So this meeting is now adjourned. Have a good evening. Thank you so much, everyone.